There you go.
There you go. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Something nice. Pretty good, how are you, sir?
Life is good.
Good, good, good.
For the...
Yeah.
Uh... No, prefer standing, because I have papers change, yeah, mhm. Right. Yeah. So... We'll do after that, and then after that I will just come and they speak here. Okay. That's fine. Yeah. Yeah. The line man move, um... Put on a bit of long hair. What... Yeah.
I'll just leave it out, I'll use the light one, I'll use the light one.
How are you? Good. Good thinking.
I've taken it off. Should work now.
Yes, yep. There's some chairs over there. You sit in one of these too, we got some chairs.
About now.
Give me a second here.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. Just disconnect the... The line, the line of...
Yeah, yeah.
Come on, grab a chair. Come on, let's just share a little joy. Thank you, Tom, right?
Steve, you couldn't even hear the take outside?
Uh, no.
There's more chairs over here.
We got hours, we got hours. Everyone turn up.
This one's a chair.
He's downstairs.
It'd be a wonderful place.
Martin.
We have some cases here.
Oh, me too.
Jeff Austin.
Nobody told me they had a light on.
Forty-eight years I never wore a... Right now. Get a hand, get a chair.
I'm wearing everywhere. He's already great, maybe.
We have to have more.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have fun, man.
Yeah.
That's a fact.
You can go all the way out in the hallway, too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Watch out, watch out, watch out.
Why is he... He's not married yet.
Don't break my sign.
Come on, you go.
Pretty good, pretty good.
You can let me do this too? You like him?
Very good.
Well, I'm gone.
Oh.
Service game.
Please look for it, Obala. Oh, there he is. How many got it? Have you seen it, the first time they did it?
Are you ready?
Yeah.
All right. Will you stand over here, I'll just stand over here, just raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Obala, Obala.
Aye, Obala, Obala.
I think I'm elected to the office.
I'm elected to the office.
Of council member first ward.
Of council member first ward.
Of said city of Austin.
Of said city of Austin.
Do swear though, support the constitution.
Do swear though, to support the constitution.
Of the United States and state of Minnesota.
Of the United States and state of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
I will faithfully discharge the duty of my office.
For the best of my judgment ability.
For the best of my judgment ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Jeff.
And this is for you.
Thank you.
For you, man. Good luck.
Thank you.
Let me check the mic, it's working. Hello, Austin. I can see so many faces joining us from different places, families from St. Cloud, friends, and from Twin City, Rochester, and Sioux Falls. Thank you for coming here today to be part of history. Today is going to be historical day that the people of Austin will tell for so many years to come. As a kid growing up in a refugee camp in Kenya, I never thought that I would be, have been so blessed to live out of my version of American dream. Less than five years ago, I was in a refugee camp hoping and praying that I will have the opportunity at a better life. A year ago, I become a United States citizen, and now I stand before you as a council member to the best city in America. My experience is a proof that no one should doubt that America is a place where all things are still possible. As I was preparing for my citizenship test, I learned about the dream held by American founding father, a government of, by, and for the people. I stand before you today as a proof of a power of democracy to represent all voices in our community. The face of Austin is changing. And we can make sure that Austin, Minnesota is a city that is always welcoming to everyone. That same warm welcome was given to another Ethiopian on June 9, 1954, when the Austin community rolled out the red carpet for the Imperial of Ethiopia, Haile Selassie. The Ethiopian imperial came to learn from our war famous Ormel. Now, some sixty-six years later, one of his countrymen is elected to the city council of Austin. For the last fourteen years, Mayor Tom Steen has worked to create a welcoming community for new residents of Austin. I want to personally thank Mayor Tom Steen for his support and for being one of the coolest mayor ever. I can still remember like yesterday, when I walked into your office, introducing myself to you and ask you if there is anything I can do for the Austin community. I also want to thank councilwoman Laura Hill for believing in my leadership and giving me a shot to earn the vote of resident of first council district. This victory would not have happened, would not have been possible without the best campaign team. To my campaign manager, Jason Baskin, thank you for running this historical campaign. To my assistant campaign manager and my leaderman mentor, Mike Dean, thank you so much for instilling the best leadership in me and believing in me more than myself. To my student senate advisor, Kids Cheese, thank you so much for all your help you give me throughout my college. To both of my campaign photographer, Bill William, and Saw Sunset, thank you for making me look fly all the time in the pictures. To my campaign editor, Sammy Whitner, thank you so much for making sure our page is running smooth and respond so quickly to all our brothers on time. To my uncle, Baboyalua Obala, thank you for the support you've been giving me since I moved to America. Finally, this victory could not have happened if not because of three women who have been by my side. My mom, my wife, and my daughter. To my mother, Adulu Okello, thank you very much for support and guidance you offer. You are my role model, and I always, you always push me to dream great thing. To my beautiful wife, Awili Van Gessha, thank you so much for advice and love. You are my partner, and Mandy is so lucky to have you as her mother. And to my daughter, Manamayla Obala, you are my inspiration and what drive me every day. To all citizens of Austin, we got more work to do. We got more work to do. Uh, we, we want to work, to do our best to make sure Austin is thriving and competing with our neighboring city. For our Austin city to thrive, we have to work hard and build more housing, affordable daycare, and bring more jobs, and keep people of Austin in Austin. To our youth, we have to start taking responsibility. Either you're born here, or you're an immigrant who just moved from Burma, or you come from West Africa, or you come from East Africa. We have to take more responsibility and build this community to be a better place for our kids and the next generation to come.
Yes.
Thank you all, people of Austin, for having faith in me, and I can't wait to roll out my sleeve and get to work tonight in my first city council meeting. Thank you very much, and may God bless you, may God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
You're like an exit song.
I think we will show a little traditional dance now, um, if my team is here, so we just, you know, play a little bit in, uh, yeah. Uh, did you... Your daughter? For, we, we can talk there. Uh, no, that won't change again, I can't change.
No, no, we're gonna do a little bit. No, there, no problem. Thank you. There you go.
I didn't care where I was.
What's that? Look, they danced like five or six years ago, you hear that?
They danced.
I recorded it, but I lost it.
Horrible guy. Talking pretty much.
He's a lot of days long.
Come on, get away.
Yeah.
Kiamu kabori, nana obala nadi, we just stand, koi kiamu kabori. Kiamu kabori. Man, mania nana butiun, kira kena, sena lau, kina wainun, timo ocha, vechi. But can you... You need to... Siarretanani, muna. Muna muna. Life's strange. Hala.
Next one, George.
Sareh.
Mathu baye.
Mura kai.
Nana, nana.
Yeah. I'm glad.
But are you Chinese? Continue.
But I am not.
Mania wana mania.
Kuchu kula nia, kula nia. Huh? Kova ni nia. Nana loka kura kura. Kova ne kua i. Nana loka koma. Jokwa ruma ya.
Uh, this is what I got.
All of that, all of that.
Okay. I don't want to go there.
This is all loud.
Mura koma.
This is my mother.
Banker, banker.
Banker, banker.
Koro, mania loka kura. Alum koma.
Very talented, really, really.
How tall are they, good with them?
What gang you in earlier?
I mean, because of that, that... That's you.
Do I do?
Obala's mom? Yes. Hi, my name is Tom. Go over here. Thanks to me.
Oh, they're loud.
Mua ga ina.
That's why I say it's a little...
Kung chal. Oramu.
Kweke, kweke.
Okay.
Kweke. Kweke. I can't hear you.
Mura kai.
Mura kai.
Yeah.